Bienvenue et merci d'être avec nous ce soir. Et bienvenue à ceux qui nous rejoignent de tous les pays du Canada. Nous sommes vraiment heureux que vous nous rejoigniez ce soir avec les leaders de santé émergents pour notre réunion de la town hall canadienne sur le accord de santé du Canada. Mon nom est Jeanette Chang, officieuse de communication pour les leaders de santé émergents d'Oréval. Et j'ai le privilège de être maître des cérémonies pour ce soir. Nous avons tous un début, donc je partagerai un peu le début des leaders de santé émergents. Les leaders de santé émergents sont une réseau professionnelle de développement créée en 2006 par Emily Grunwald de l'Association médicale canadienne et Adrian Hagen qui vient de Saskatchewan Health. Ils fournissent des opportunités pour soutenir le développement des leaders de santé émergents à travers la création de réseaux d'échange de connaissances, d'événements éducatifs, d'opportunités de communication et de discussions de santé informées. Aujourd'hui, la réseau de leaders de santé émergents a étendu jusqu'à sept villes et sept nœuds différents dans différentes villes tout au long du Canada avec plus de 1 000 membres. Et continue à développer les leaders de santé aujourd'hui. Le but de la réseau de leaders de santé émergents est de développer les leaders de santé. L'entendre du financement de notre système de santé est critique dans la leadership de la santé. La réunion de la town hall canadienne du accord de santé du Canada sera utilisée comme mécanisme pour informer le public sur l'impact que ces restrictions ont sur le futur de notre santé. Non seulement cela, mais c'est pour avoir un dialogue commun avec les leaders de santé différents et leurs perspectives et pour déterminer les prochaines étapes à prendre. C'est pourquoi notre thème pour ce soir est "l'engagement de la leadership et nouvelles directions". En participant à la réunion de la town hall de ce soir, vous démonstrez que vous êtes notre partenaire dans la leadership de la santé. Vous contribuez aussi à l'amélioration du système de santé. Donc merci d'être venu ce soir. C'est mon plaisir d'introduire notre modérateur et les auditeurs pour la réunion de la town hall ce soir. Notre modérateur est Dr Ali Khan Abdallah. Dr Abdallah est le président de l'Académie de médecine d'Oréval et le directeur médical du Centre de santé King's Way. Il est également le récepteur de la médaille de la Diamant de la Reine et le président du comité auditif de l'Ontario Association médicale. Pour nos présentations, notre premier auditeur est Dr Michael Raklis. Dr Raklis est un médecin de santé publique de Toronto et un consultant privé dans la analyse des politiques de santé. Il a consulté le gouvernement fédéral, tous les dix gouvernements provinciaux et deux commissions royales. Dr Raklis est aussi professeur adjointe à l'université de Toronto. Notre deuxième auditeur est Dr Chris Simpson. Dr Simpson est le président électe de l'Association médicale canadienne. Il est aussi professeur en médecine et chef de cardiologie à l'Université Queen's ainsi que le directeur médical du programme cardiaque à l'hôpital Kingston General. Et il sert aussi comme président de l'Alliance de l'attente. Notre troisième auditeur est Dr Ray Dionne Dan. Dr Dionne Dan est un épidémiologiste et professeur assistant à l'Université d'Oréval de la Sciences de la santé interdisciplinaires. Formellement le conseiller scientifique principal du gouvernement fédéral sur le sujet de la reproduction assistante et il est également fondateur et éditeur exécutif du Journal des sciences de la santé interdisciplinaires. Et enfin, notre dernier auditeur pour le soir est Dr Jack Kitts. Il est le président et CEO de l'hôpital d'Oréval. En plus d'être un anesthesiologiste, il est professeur associé de l'anesthésie à l'université d'Oréval. Et Dr Kitts porte aussi plusieurs postes de leadership, y compris président du Conseil de santé du Canada. Donc brièvement, pour notre plan de soirée, vous pouvez voir ça sur la屏 Nous donnerons une petite histoire du accord de santé du Canada. Ça sera suivi par des présentations de nos auditeurs. Après ça, il y aura une discussion de panel sur l'engagement de la leadership dans la santé et les nouvelles directions. Il y aura une session de questions et réponses avec l'audience. Et enfin, nous aurons un tirage chanceux. Merci et déclarations concluant. Je voudrais demander au président des leaders de santé émergents d'Oréval et les autres exécutifs de se lever. Si vous me rejoignez, s'il vous plaît, leur donnez une boucle d'applaudissements pour tout leur travail dur, collaboration et l'exécution de l'événement de ce soir. Je voudrais également reconnaître le Canadian College of Health Leaders. Merci d'être avec nous ce soir et votre continued partnership avec les leaders de santé émergents du Canada. Je voudrais aussi reconnaître quelques personnes dans notre audience, donc s'il vous plaît, raisez votre main quand je dis leur nom. Le premier est Marie Belanger, membre du parlement pour l'Oréval-Baigny. Emily Grunwald, fondateur des leaders de santé émergents et directrice du Département de médecine et professionnelle à l'Association médicale canadienne. Jean Guy Soulier, vice-président de l'Association nationale de retirees fédérales et ancien président du Conseil national des seniors. Monique Dolittle-Romars, CEO de la société de soins canadiennes. Amira Abdallah, président de l'association pharmaceutique d'Oréval. Akos Hofer, CEO de Pearlie &amp; Rito Veterans Health Center. Tim Klug, président et CEO de l'Oréval Hospital Foundation. Dr Jeffrey Turnbull, chef de staff à l'hôpital d'Oréval. Dr Edward Lai, associate dean de l'affaire universitaire à l'université Carleton. Dr Israel Levy, officieure de la santé pour la santé publique d'Oréval. Et enfin Jessie Cancer, président de la Fédération canadienne des étudiants médicaux. Et maintenant, allons à nos sponsors. Donc les leaders de santé émergents souhaiteraient remercier les compagnies et organisations suivantes pour sponsoriser l'événement pour ce soir. Donc de manière particulière, nous voudrions remercier Lovlaw's, la supermarché canadienne véritable, et ANO's Food Services. Ils ont fourni tout le nourriture et les rafraîchissements pour ce soir. Et nous voudrions aussi remercier le Lord Elegant Hotel, Delta Hotels Ottawa, Restaurant 18 et David's Tea pour nous sponsoriser pour les quatre prix pour notre tirage chanceux. Et juste quelques items de housekeeping avant de commencer notre histoire et nos présentations. Donc en cas de grande question, les restrooms. Si vous allez à la porte à l'arrière et à gauche, ils devraient être là. Pour les rafraîchissements, s'il vous plaît, soyez libre de vous servir de rafraîchissement. Comme les leaders de santé émergents, nous avons besoin de manger, donc je vous encourage à manger. Si vous utilisez Twitter pour notre hashtag pour le soir, c'est #HealthLeadershipMatters. Donc je vous encourage à tweeter sur notre événement. Et s'il vous plaît, fermez vos cellphones si vous ne l'avez pas déjà fait. Maintenant pour l'histoire, je vais maintenant introduire Dr Owen Adams, vice-président de recherche et politique à l'Association médicale canadienne qui présentera la diapositive sur l'histoire du accord de santé du Canada.
Ok, merci beaucoup Jeanette. J'ai été demandé de résumer l'évolution de l'accord sur une diapositive. Mon style habituel serait 3 000 mots, c'est un peu un défi, mais de toute façon. Donc l'accord de santé de 2004 a été le résultat d'une réunion de premier ministre qui a eu lieu en automne en septembre de cette année au cours d'un certain nombre de jours et de considérables retours entre les premiers et l'automne. Et cet accord a été construit sur deux accords précédents résultant de réunions de premier ministre en septembre 2000 et février 2003, qui ont suivi directement sur les pieds du rapport Romano de novembre 2002. Donc ces accords ont sauté de nouveau en termes d'inclusion de fonds destinés à des choses comme l'équipement médical et les records de santé électroniques ainsi que l'augmentation dans le transfert de la santé au Canada. L'accord de 2004 contient des engagements dans dix domaines et le panel va parler plus de cela. En termes d' oversight, l'accord était le sujet de deux révisions parlementaires en 2008-2012 plus un certain nombre de rapports du Conseil de santé du Canada. Dans ses dernières actualisations économiques, au moins dès 2010, le gouvernement a donné des indications prévues qu'il allait étendre l'escalateur de 6% pour deux ans supplémentaires. Et pendant les élections fédérales de 2000, le gouvernement a dit qu'il allait s'asseoir avec les provinces pour renégocier l'accord. Cependant, le 19 décembre 2011, le late ministre financier James Flaherty a fait un annonce unilatérale que l'escalateur de 6% serait étendu pour trois ans et qui est ensuite lié à la croissance nominale et au produit domestique grossier avec un taux de 3% jusqu'à 2023-2024. Donc le panel va remplir le reste pour vous, merci.
Merci Dr Adams pour partager l'histoire du accord de santé du Canada. Nous allons maintenant passer à notre première présentation avec Dr Michael Raklis. Dr Raklis, êtes-vous là ?
Oui, pouvez-vous m'entendre ?
Oui, donnez-nous un moment pour charger vos diapositives. Vous pouvez aller avant Dr Raklis.
Ok, bien, si nous pouvons passer à ma diapositive deuxième. Merci. Et je veux remercier les leaders de santé émergents d'Oréval et féliciter vos leaders pour organiser cet événement. Mes meilleures souhaites à mes collègues auditeurs et d'autres dignitaires de la salle. En particulier, je vais dire un salut à Dr Israel Levy et Jessie Cancer. Désolé, je ne peux pas être là ce soir. Vous pouvez voir sur ma diapositive deuxième, mon but pour mes remarques aujourd'hui est de vous donner un background sur la performance du système de santé du Canada. Mon diagnostic des problèmes du système de santé et de sa inability à se reformer et une introduction courte à la rôle fédérale. Diapositive suivante, s'il vous plaît. Et je voudrais commencer avec la nouvelle connaissance reçue sur le système de santé du Canada. Donc nous devrions être sur diapositive trois à ce moment. Que la normale connaissance reçue sur le système de santé du Canada soit : premier, les coûts de la santé sont hors de contrôle. Deuxième, mes collègues baby boomers et moi allons vraiment nous mettre en piste quand nous vieillirons. Et que l'alternative unique est de pirater les services, de passer en privé ou mieux encore, de faire les deux. Et parmi les dignitaires qui ont proposé que nous devions avoir une conversation à la tête sont Brian Mulroney, Jeffrey Simpson et David Dodge. Donc je suppose que nous sommes juste des enfants à propos de ne pas être assez mûrs pour gérer les problèmes difficiles. Diapositive suivante, s'il vous plaît. Le problème, ça fait un excellent sonner. Et à la fin, vous pouvez dire "Tada" et qu'il n'y a pas d'argument à rebuts. Et puis, puis on continue. Mais bien sûr, il y a des problèmes avec chacun de ces quatre points. Et je voudrais passer à ces quatre points dans un peu plus de détails. Donc à ce moment, nous devrions être sur diapositive numéro cinq. Quelle est la diagnostique correcte des problèmes dans notre système ? Tout d'abord, les coûts de la santé du Canada ne sont pas "hors de contrôle", bien que le système de santé ne soit pas sauvé. La chose principale est que le money n'est pas l'issue principale. Nous pouvons régler la plupart des problèmes dans notre système actuel sans beaucoup de ressources nouvelles. Les problèmes dans notre système, remercier Dieu, sont principalement liés aux dépenses et surtout aux processus de soins adaptés. C'est de la bonne nouvelle parce que si nous operaisions notre système à la pointe de l'efficacité, alors nous aurions besoin de nouvelles ressources. Je ne pense pas que nous ayons besoin de beaucoup de nouvelles ressources pour régler les problèmes dans notre système. Et c'est en partie parce que ces problèmes reflètent la nécessité de faire des changements substantiels dans les modèles de soins dans les quatre dernières décennies. Donc diapositive suivante, les coûts de la santé ne sont pas hors de contrôle. Mais comme je l'ai dit, la santé ne s'est pas sauvée non plus. Donc maintenant, je suis sur diapositive huit, qui est la première de plusieurs graphiques qui montrent les problèmes financiers et économiques autour de Medicare et des dépenses du secteur public. Cette diapositive, diapositive huit, montre les dépenses de la santé canadienne comme une partie du produit domestique grossier. Et c'est des dépenses de la santé totale. Maintenant, vous avez peut-être attendu, si vous avez écouté quelqu'un de ces gars qui m'ont mentionné plus tôt, comme Mr Dodge ou Jeffrey Simpson, vous avez peut-être attendu que cette ligne soit allée vers une augmentation exponentielle. Vous entendez toujours les gens se moquer de la façon dont nous ne pouvons pas banquer la courbe des coûts. Mais comme vous le noterez, la courbe des coûts a été banquée en 2009. Il y a eu une grosse augmentation de la santé comme une partie de notre PIB en 2009, principalement parce que l'économie contractait 6% et pas parce que les dépenses montèrent si vite. Et si vous allez à la diapositive suivante, donc diapositive neuf maintenant, celle-ci examine le dépense de la santé du gouvernement provincial comme une partie du PIB. environ 70% de ce que nous dépensons sur la santé est public et environ 95% de ça est dépensé par le gouvernement provincial. Et ceci est, si quelque chose, encore plus dramatique, montrant que si vous regardez en arrière sur les trente-dix dernières années au Canada, oui, les coûts ont augmenté, les coûts ont diminué comme une partie de notre économie. Principalement, les coûts comme une partie de notre économie montent pendant des périodes de récession quand l'économie contracte. Et encore une fois, la courbe des coûts a été banquée il y a quatre ans. Donc nos coûts sont toujours à la hauteur historique. Mais encore une fois, en regardant en arrière les trente-dix dernières années, ce n'est pas une ligne qui est allée vers une augmentation exponentielle. La diapositive suivante examine le dépense de la santé du gouvernement provincial comme une partie des dépenses de programmes. C'est la diapositive dix maintenant. Donc vous avez entendu qu'ils disent que les routes sont pleines de trous et que nos enfants ne peuvent pas lire. Et c'est tout parce que nous avons brûlé notre argent comme des sailors stupides sur notre système de santé. Maintenant, encore une fois, les dépenses de la santé doivent être de préoccupation, je dirais. Principalement parce que je ne pense pas que nous obtenions de bons résultats de leur part. Mais de l'autre côté, le dépense de la santé du gouvernement provincial comme une partie du dépense de programmes globale a atteint le seuil encore une fois il y a cinq ans. Pendant les années 90, nous étions presque à la plateau. La santé était environ un tiers des dépenses du gouvernement provincial. Puis elle a augmenté au cours de juste cinq ans ou même plus près de 39%. Et maintenant, elle est en dessous de 38%. Mais la diapositive suivante indique, donc maintenant diapositive 11, le dépense de programmes du gouvernement provincial en pourcentage de notre économie. Encore une fois, si vous lisez le National Post comme je le fais chaque matin, vous espérez que cette ligne va aussi aller vers une fonction exponentielle. Que des gouvernements sont hors de contrôle, dépensent comme des sailors stupides, etc. En fait, le dépense de programmes du gouvernement provincial a atteint le seuil il y a environ 20 ans et a vraiment baissé beaucoup jusqu'à, encore une fois, 2009, l'année de récession. Et ça a été lentement descendu depuis lors. Donc si nous regardons la diapositive suivante, cette diapositive 12, elle va dans ce que je pense être le gros problème dont nous ne parlons pas, qui est que le secteur public a vraiment été en baisse. Ça a été sur un diapode. Les revenus gouvernementaux globaux ont été flasqués par près de 6% du PIB en 15 ans. C'est l'équivalent de 100 milliards de dollars en revenus en cours. Maintenant, à 38% du PIB, les revenus gouvernementaux canadiens sont à leur niveau le plus bas depuis 1980. Maintenant, si en fait nous avions juste reçu environ la moitié de ces taxes en secteur public, qui représente 3% du PIB du Canada, ça serait suffisant pour either éliminer tous les déficits gouvernementaux actuels, surtout pour 2014-2015, plus que d'éliminer tous les déficits gouvernementaux, ou nous pourrions financer le premier dollar, la pharmacie universelle, le long terme, la santé à la maison. Nous pourrions avoir un soin régulé pour tous les parents qui le veulent, comme au Québec. Nous pourrions éliminer toute l'attention universitaire et collégiale et nous pourrions construire 15 000 unités de logement adéquat chaque année. Et si nous avons vraiment besoin de ces fighter jets, ils sont facilement accessibles. Donc la diapositive suivante indique que c'est un problème dont nous ne parlons pas beaucoup. Chaque fois que le National Post a un article ou une offrande qui dit que le dépense gouvernementale a été réduite beaucoup et que nous allons sauvé le État et le rendre vraiment petit et tout ça. Mais la plupart du temps, nous ne voyons pas mentionné que nous avons vraiment été en train de gâcher le public. Je suis crainte que les légendes ne montrent pas sur ces diapositives. La ligne rouge est le combined revenue of federal and provincial government as a share of GDP. Et comme vous pouvez le voir, ça a été très dramatiquement descendu au cours des 20 dernières années. Bob Ray, 20 ans plus tard, a dit que les Canadiens voulaient payer des taxes américaines et obtenir des services sociaux européens. Nous sommes maintenant à, nous avons atteint l'un de ces fins. La diapositive suivante indique que selon la statistique des outils gouvernementaux, la taille du pays canadien est environ la même taille que le pays américain en ce moment. Les outils gouvernementaux sont le budget du gouvernement moins toute surplus plus tout déficit. Et selon cette mesure, le gouvernement canadien est environ la même taille que le gouvernement américain. La dernière fois que ça s'est passé, c'était jamais. Donc le secteur public canadien était avant de 35% plus grand que le secteur public des États-Unis. C'est maintenant diapositive 15. Mais maintenant, ils sont environ la même taille. Maintenant, allons à diapositive 16. Peut-être que c'était une bonne excuse quand vous avez fait quelque chose de mal au petit et que vous avez dit à votre mère que tous les autres enfants faisaient ça. Mais il y a une certaine sécurité dans le pack. Et comme vous pouvez le voir, la santé comme une partie du PIB au Canada est juste à peu près au niveau de l'OCCT. Ce sont tous les pays avec des revenus nationaux et une puissance de consommation et de power parity de 30 000 ou plus et qui avaient des données de 2011. Et le Canada dépense plus que certains pays, mais moins que la France, la Allemagne et certains autres pays que nous considérons comme des pays qui ont des normes de vie comparable. Donc maintenant, allons à diapositive 17. Que la population âgée, que nous connaissons depuis bien plus de 25 ans, ne va pas mourir avec Medicare. Bien sûr que le vieillissement et les coûts de la santé du Canada augmentent avec l'âge. L'âge de la population perçue a été montré depuis de nombreuses années ne pas augmenter les dépenses de santé par plus de 1% par an. L'âge n'est pas un tsunami, peu importe ce que les gens disent à propos de ça. C'est comme un glaçage, personne ne se rend compte de ce glaçage à moins qu'ils ne bougent pendant quelques siècles. Nous avons encore beaucoup de temps pour préparer et adapter notre système. Et quelque chose qui n'est pas facturé dans pratiquement aucune des projections démographiques que je regarde est que les plus vieux sont devenir plus sains que jamais. Et quand vous commencez à facturer, un déclin continu de 3% chaque année comme nous l'avons eu depuis 50 ans dans la mortalité cardiovasculaire, des déclinaisons importantes dans la mortalité du cancer du poumon et même des déclinaisons, il semble, en regardant des autres pays avec des statistiques meilleures, dans le taux de démence, l'hypothèse d'âge, de démence à l'âge, alors l'âge de la population n'est pas le gros bug. Et diapositive 18, une citation de Dr Bill Dalziel de l'Oréval Geriatrician, "Ce n'est pas l'âge de la population qui menace la crise financière et la santé, mais il est nécessaire d'examiner et de faire des changements appropriés dans notre système de santé." Donc regardons la diapositive suivante, comment compare le système de santé du Canada ? Et diapositive 20, notre santé est assez bonne, notre soins hospitaliers sont assez bons par standards internationaux, bien que nos taux d'infection soient plus élevés que certains autres jurisdictions comparables. Mais en général, notre soins hospitaliers semblent être aussi bons ou mauvais que dans d'autres pays. Mais comme la diapositive suivante souligne, nous fournissons moins et moins de soins dans les institutions et c'est notre soins hospitaliers primaires et services communautaires qui, par standards internationaux, ne sont pas à la pointe. C'est en mettant ça en mode. Maintenant, diapositive 22, nous apparaît que parmi les 11 pays que le fonds communautal basé à New York City a étudié depuis un certain nombre d'années, parmi ces 11 pays riches, nous sommes derniers en termes d'être en mesure de recevoir des appointments le même jour ou le lendemain avec un médecin ou une nurse de soins primaires. Et nous sommes premiers en attente de six jours ou plus pour une appointment. La diapositive suivante indique que nous sommes les plus grands utilisateurs des ER à part les Américains qui ont faible assurance de santé. Nous sommes plus ou moins utilisés dans les rooms d'urgence ces deux dernières années que les autres dix pays. Et maintenant, diapositive 24, nous apparaît aussi que nous avons les plus longues attentes pour les spécialistes. Que nous sommes les moins susceptibles d'attente de moins de quatre semaines et les plus susceptibles d'attente de plus de deux mois pour voir un spécialiste. Et comme la diapositive suivante, diapositive 25 indique que quand vous n'avez pas de bon soins hospitaliers primaires et services communautaires, c'est comme jouer au hockey et tirer votre goal in the first period. Vous allez gagner beaucoup de buts, mais vous allez perdre chaque jeu. Et j'ai fait cette diapositive il y a quelques semaines avant l'injury d'Mr Price. Mais être comme les Canadiens qui mettent six skaters sur l'ice et ne pas porter Carey Price en but. Quel est le but de ça ? Vous gagnez beaucoup de buts, mais vous allez perdre chaque jeu. Et dans notre système de santé, notre système hospitalier ne peut pas compenser le fait que nos services hospitaliers primaires et communautaires ne sont pas à la pointe des standards internationaux. Maintenant, sur diapositive 26, avec une citation de la commission de révision de la santé en Ontario dirigée par Dr Evans en 1987, pour noter que nous savons depuis de nombreuses années que nous devons corriger notre système en mettant plus d'importance sur les soins primaires, intégrant et coordonner les services et atteindre un objectif communautaire pour la santé. Et ce paragraphe dans la résumé exécutif de ce rapport de 1987 souligne que, en fait, ils ont connu ça depuis 15 ans avant 1987. Donc en gros, pendant les 40 dernières années, nous savons ce que nous devons faire. Dr Chicks et d'autres organisations ont sorti les mêmes sorties de rapports pendant 40 ans, mais nous n'avons vraiment pas corrigé les choses. Et en fait, la diapositive suivante, diapositive 27, est une citation du rapport du Conseil de santé du Canada de 2013. "Bien que les Canadiens aient plus de confiance dans leur système de santé, l'accès à la santé n'a pas été substantiellement amélioré." Et c'est le cas, malheureusement. Allons à diapositive 28. Encore une fois, ce n'est pas de la nouvelle, mais ce qui sera probablement de la nouvelle pour certains de vous dans la salle est que les premiers fondateurs de Medicare, tels que Tommy Douglas, ont prédisent tout ça. Tommy Douglas, en 1982, à une réunion à Montreal, a dit que l'élimination des barrières financières, en d'autres termes, l'établissement de Medicare, était une question simple, une question de loi, une question de taxation. Maintenant, ce n'était pas vraiment facile. Mais il continue de dire que le vrai problème est comment organisons notre système de livraison de santé. Nous avons un système de livraison de santé qui est lamentablement à la date. Je pense que si Mr Douglas revenait aujourd'hui au Canada, il serait très stressé à la quantité dont nous avons vraiment corrigé notre système de santé. La diapositive suivante, diapositive 29, encore une fois, d'un discours fait par Tommy Douglas en 1979, cette fois en automne. Il dit que il n'est pas préoccupé par Medicare, mais il souligne que Medicare allait être implémenté en deux étapes. La première était l'élimination des barrières financières. Et puis sur la diapositive suivante, il souligne que la phase numéro deux serait la plus difficile pour alterer notre système de livraison, réduire les coûts et mettre plus d'importance sur la prévention de la médecine. Donc allons à la diapositive suivante. La deuxième étape de Medicare pourrait être considérée comme simplement livrer les services de santé différemment designés pour garder les gens bien. Allons à la diapositive suivante maintenant, je suis sur diapositive 32. Si nous sommes prêts à regarder la façon dont nous livrons les services et en particulier les processus archaïques que nous avons en place, nous pourrions facilement éliminer l'attente pour les soins hospitaliers primaires. Certainement, dans 90-95% du Canada, dans le sud du Canada, nous avons assez de médecins, de nurses et de fournisseurs de soins de santé que personne ne devrait attendre pour pratiquement aucun service médical. C'est vrai, personne ne devrait attendre pour pratiquement aucun service médical. Avec des équipes interdisciplinaires et un accès large à l'office rédesigné pour les soins hospitaliers primaires, nous pourrions éliminer l'attente pour les soins hospitaliers primaires et facilement assurer qu'il y ait assez de médecins et de soins de soins primaires afin que chaque Canadien puisse avoir accès à l'un. La diapositive suivante souligne un merveilleux programme qui a été développé à Hamilton et qui a été opéré depuis plus de 20 ans, qui intégrait 22 psychiatres dans l'équipe de santé familiale de Hamilton avec 150 médecins, 150 nurses, 80 médecins de santé mentale et un certain nombre de fournisseurs de soins. Nous, encore une fois, la plupart des gens dans cette salle que vous êtes dans ont probablement entendu ça avant. Pourquoi ne l'avons-nous pas répliqué ? Ce programme, qui intègre les spécialistes avec les fournisseurs de soins hospitaliers primaires, a augmenté le nombre de patients de santé mentale vus par 10 fois alors que simultanément diminue les référations à la clinique spécialité par 70%. Nous pourrions faire ça dans toutes les areas de la soins spécialistes. Personne ne devrait attendre pour voir un médecin familier, personne ne devrait attendre pour voir un spécialiste dans ce pays. Et dans la diapositive suivante, diapositive 34, il souligne que ce n'est pas juste d'aller voir le docteur qui est important. l'Alliance Multicultural de la Santé Communale de Toronto a fait un travail fantastique avec leur programme de travail de santé communautaire qui a amélioré l'accès pour bien plus de 12 000 mères et leurs enfants. Donc ce n'est pas juste d'avoir accès au docteur, bien que ce soit la partie la plus facile. Sur le papier, encore une fois, je dirai que dans presque tous les pays du Canada, personne ne devrait attendre pour voir un médecin familier, un nurse de soins primaires ou un spécialiste. Donc pourquoi la réforme de la santé prend si longtemps ? Et Jeanette, je vais juste vous dire que je pense que j'ai quatre minutes de temps et je vais terminer bientôt. Mais pourquoi la réforme de la santé prend si longtemps ? Donc maintenant, je suis sur diapositive 35. Et maintenant, allons à diapositive 36. Je pourrais parler beaucoup de ça, mais il y a d'autres beaux auditeurs que vous allez entendre. Donc sur diapositive 36, c'est celui avec l'éléphant. Il souligne qu'il y a beaucoup d'autres problèmes cliniques, mais la manque d'administration clinique efficace est largement l'éléphant le plus grand dans la salle. Maintenant, que signifie l'administration clinique ? Bon, tous les autres systèmes de santé haut de performance dans le monde, désolé, tous les systèmes de santé haut de performance dans le monde, que nous parlions de l'Alaska Central Foundation, la clinique de Mayo ou Stollland, que chaque médecin est un parti d'un groupe médical, ils obtiennent un rapport hebdomadaire sur leur performance et ils obtiennent une révision annuelle de performance. Et ça s'appelle l'administration clinique. Et au Canada, nous n'en avons que ça dans certains départements, dans certains hôpitaux ou dans certains universités. C'est loin, loin, loin de être un standard national. Donc diapositive 37, la définition de l'administration clinique du Royaume-Uni, "Un cadre dans lequel les organisations de l'HSS sont responsables de continuer à améliorer la qualité de leurs services de santé et de sécuriser les standards de santé élevés en créant un environnement dans lequel l'excellence dans la santé peut fleurir." Et diapositive 38 souligne les points clés de l'administration clinique. Il y a des standards, il y a de l'responsabilité, il y a un focus sur l'amélioration de la qualité continue et nous voulons créer un environnement dans lequel l'excellence peut fleurir. Diapositive 39, une citation de Dr Brian Montgomery, qui est le directeur médical de l'HSS BICE en Stollland, une région de environ demi-milliard de personnes, qui décrit comment, à travers une efficace administration clinique concentrée sur la prescription d'antibiotiques... effective clinical governance, focusing on the prescribing of antibiotics, they saved ten million dollars Canadian, which they then use to fund nursing physicians. That's what every doctor in this country should be part of a medical group that has got quarterly reports and an annual performance review and is continuously improving its quality. The next slide, slide forty, highlights that, I think that Canadians strongly believe in public finance, they strongly believe that all Canadians deserve equal access to excellent healthcare, but the real question is, do Canadians believe that governments have legitimacy to restructure the way doctors do their work? And that's a tough one, because the work of doctors has to be restructured, but it certainly doesn't look like that when push comes to shove, that governments are clever enough politically, or perhaps otherwise, to make this happen. So, next slide, a couple of quick slides on federal, provincial, territorial arrangements. Canada is a notion, not a nation. There are only seventeen or so true federations in this world. There's no other federation except Canada where the federal government spends less than fifty percent of the public sector's budget. In Canada, it's forty percent, and it's going down rapidly. We are not going to be anything close to being a nation unless we can have federal leadership. And I do believe, as the others will say, that we need a, I think, that we need a new federal-provincial-territorial accord, but the last accord was far from being a success. The new money has to buy change. The new money in two thousand and four bought very little change. We need to have the proper measurements so we can know if change has occurred. We need an organization like the Health Council of Canada that can provide much, much better reporting than what the Health Council was allowed to provide to Canadians. The federal government can play a very useful role in helping the provinces reform their system, and to do that, I think politicians have to craft new ways of developing health policy, which includes patients. Ross Moore, I could say, but you've got some other terrific speakers to talk to. So in summary, moving to my last slide now, the report of Medicare's demise is premature. However, Canada's health system performs poorly compared to those in other countries, especially when we look at care outside of hospitals. The solutions have been talked about for decades. Redesigning primary healthcare practice is the key to improving the health system's performance. Physicians have to embrace change, but I think we need politi, we need some clever politicians who can create some really proper change processes, bringing doctors and others together so that we can actually implement some of the evidence that we've been developing over the last forty years. Thank you very much again to the emerging health leaders for organizing this wonderful meeting in Ottawa, and I look forward to hearing what my fellow speakers have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raklis, for your in-depth presentation on the funding of healthcare and on the mechanisms required for change. I would like to introduce our second speaker for the evening, so that's Dr. Chris Simpson, president-elect of the Canadian Medical Association.
Well, thank you very much for the invitation, and I was just saying to somebody earlier today that the road from Kingston to Ottawa seems to be getting shorter and shorter. I wanted to mention tonight, I've seen, I saw Desiree Persaud tonight, who is a medical school classmate and a fellow New Brunswick-er. Maritimes always recognize each other in a crowd, so, haven't seen her in many years, so it's great you could come. So, the two thousand and four health accord, well, as you know, it included ten broad commitments, and I don't want to go over all of those broad commitments. If you want to go into it in detail, I would refer you to the two thousand and twelve report on the, of the second parliamentary review that was conducted by the Senate Standing Committee on Social Affairs, Science, and Technology, which we were privileged to contribute to, and that contains forty-six recommendations, so you can take that to bed tonight and look through it and let me know what you think. But what I want to do tonight is highlight some of the key issues, and also comment on the December two thousand and eleven fiscal framework, because I think that's a very important piece of information that's going to inform where we're going over the next few years. And I'll talk about some of these things under the heading of the good, the bad, and the ugly. So we'll start with the good. It's always good to start with the good. I'll come back at the end and conclude with what we should do next, so maybe that's good too. So, good, bad, ugly, good, that's the way we'll do it. So, the largest single commitment of the two thousand and four accord was the five-point-five-billion wait-time reduction fund, which was intended to reduce waiting times for radiation therapy for cancer, coronary artery bypass graft surgery, diagnostic imaging, hip and knee replacement surgery, and cataract surgery. Those were the so-called Big Five. Now, while we've not licked the wait-time problem yet, far from it, I think that we have made some progress over the past ten years. The accord contained provision for specific observable targets for wait times for these procedures, the most important of which was the call for evidence-based benchmarks for medically acceptable wait times for the five treatment areas that were to be established by two thousand and five. Now, the medical community was immediately galvanized by this challenge, and the CMA came together with six national specialty societies that represented those priority areas in the fall of two thousand and four, and set about developing benchmarks under the banner of the Wait Time Alliance, or WTA. We released our interim benchmarks in April of two thousand and five, and our final benchmarks in August of that year. I think that this consensus amongst medical stakeholders, these doctors' groups, was a key contributing factor to leading us to the December twelfth, two thousand and five announcement by the provincial and territorial health ministers that they had agreed to common benchmarks for four of the five treatment areas. Now, to this day, they still haven't established a benchmark for diagnostic imaging, but I hasten to add, we have. The WTA issued our first report card in November of two thousand and six, and we've repeated it annually since that time. The next one comes out June the third, just in a couple of weeks. Since its founding, the Wait Time Alliance membership has doubled to fourteen members, fourteen specialty societies, and also four partners. In our two thousand and thirteen report, we provided ratings for more than twenty conditions for which data were available in at least one province. The Wait Time Alliance reports have been very effective in influencing the provinces to improve their wait-time reporting websites, and our next report, as I said, will be released in June. One of the things that I think's been particularly pleasurable has been the fact that we've been able to partner with patients and use the patients to tell us how good the wait-time websites are by the provinces, and there's no question in my mind that the quality of the websites has changed as a result of that influence. Now, to be sure, there have been some critics of the Wait Time Reduction Fund who have argued that the chosen five categories necessarily drew resources from other areas, and those of you who work in operating rooms perhaps have seen this in real life. Our response at the WTA has been to build a comprehensive set of wait-time benchmarks for consultations, tests, and procedures, over a thousand of them, and they're there for anyone to use. All of them should be publicly reported, not just five, but all of them should be publicly reported. And we're very excited now because we're working with provincial governments to help them report more in a series of partnerships where we're hoping to see much more extensive public reporting of these data. I would also argue that a major spin-off from the wait-times effort has been the stimulation of research and knowledge exchange. I think there's been a significant impetus for operations research in Canadian healthcare, such as the establishment of Professor Michael Carter's Centre for Research in Healthcare Engineering at the University of Toronto, and the adoption of lean management techniques in various places. In terms of knowledge exchange, building on a small round table that was convened by the CMA in two thousand and four to discuss wait times, an international consortium of organizations have come together to sponsor an annual series of Taming of the Q conferences that attract presenters and participants from across Canada that has essentially become a community of practice. As I said earlier, we've not beaten wait times, but we've made progress, and there are ambitious goals. For example, the Saskatchewan government promised in two thousand and ten that by March two thousand and fourteen, no one would have to wait longer than twelve weeks for surgery. It looks like it'll take them one more year to reach that goal, but it's impressive nonetheless. Moreover, Saskatchewan is now looking ahead to eliminate emergency department wait times by two thousand and seventeen, and you've heard this election campaign in Ontario start to talk about emergency room wait times as well. So that was the good. So now, the bad. I would highlight two areas of the accord that have been, for me, profoundly disappointing, and these were the commitments on accountability and reporting to citizens and the National Pharmaceutical Strategy, or Pharmacare. The accountability and reporting commitment actually began in the two thousand accord, in which first ministers agreed to develop a framework of common indicators and to begin reporting by two thousand and two. Indeed, an initial series of reports was issued, were issued, in two thousand and two. This commitment was reinforced again in the two thousand and three accord, which included an annex of about forty indicators and a direction to health ministries to develop additional indicators. The two thousand and four accord added a commitment to report on the elements of the accord and an agreement that the Health Council of Canada would report annually on both the health of Canadians and on the elements of the accord. A second set of reports was issued in two thousand and four, but thereafter, the provincial reporting went off the rails, and the indicator development just simply stopped. This was noted in the first three-year review of the accord that was conducted by the House of Commons Health Committee in two thousand and eight, and it called for the completion of a set of common indicators by March of two thousand and nine. The second three-year review also called for indicator development. To its credit, Health Canada has continued to publish indicator reports, the most recent being in two thousand and ten, and I would be remiss if I didn't salute the efforts of the Health Council of Canada to monitor the accords. The closure of the Health Council of Canada definitely leaves a gap. So I conclude from this that the provinces and territories, to be very frank, have been and are resolute in resisting attempts to facilitate benchmarking for their performance against each other. I think that's unfortunate for two reasons. First, there's significant variability across jurisdictions on some key indicators. For example, according to Statistics Canada's most recent life tables, life expectancy at birth is almost seven years longer in British Columbia than it is in the territories. And there's a neighborhood in Hamilton that is socially disadvantaged, socio-economically disadvantaged, where the life expectancy is a decade or more less than a neighborhood just a few kilometers away in the same city. Second, I worry that this silo mentality in reporting is obscuring or diverting attention from Canada's decline in indicator performance internationally. In nineteen eighty, we were ranked seventh in the OECD for life expectancy, at about point eight years below first-place Japan. As of two thousand and eleven, we were tied with three other countries for thirteenth place, and the gap between Canada and Japan has doubled to one point six years. Kihi has recently put in place a performance indicator system called ourhealthsystem.ca, which comprises fifteen indicators that can be drilled down from the province-territory level to the health-region level and to the hospital level where available, and I hope that develops some traction. On the National Pharmaceutical Strategy, I think that the failure of governments to follow through on the accord commitments on pharmaceuticals is a disgrace. This was initially a two thousand and three accord commitment, a commitment that by March two thousand and six, all Canadians would have access to catastrophic drug coverage. In the two thousand and four accord, this was watered down to the development of costing options for catastrophic coverage, and estimates were indeed produced in the two thousand and six progress report, but absolutely nothing has been heard since. The existence of wide variability in prescription drug coverage has been well documented. According to Statistics Canada, almost one in ten households spend greater than three percent of their after-tax income on prescription drugs in two thousand and eight. Across provinces, this ranged from four-point-six percent in Alberta to four-point-seven percent in Ontario to thirteen-point-three percent on Prince Edward Island. Statistics Canada has since discontinued this indicator. On the Commonwealth Fund's two thousand and thirteen International Health Policy Study, eight percent of Canadian respondents said that they had either not filled a prescription or had skipped doses because of cost issues, and I know in my practice the number's much higher than that. Moreover, there have been numerous media stories about inequities in access to cancer drugs across provinces. Research done for the Canadian Medical Association in two thousand and twelve showed that almost one in five households, eighteen percent, does not have supplementary insurance coverage that would cover prescription drugs. More recently, it's been reported on a survey by Himmelstein and Al, that, this was a survey of Canadians that had experienced bankruptcy between two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, and they found that three-quarters of the respondents who'd had a medical bill within the last two years said that prescription drugs was their single biggest medical expense. In consequence, governments are going it alone, New Brunswick and Prince Edward Island being the most recent to introduce catastrophic drug coverage. Moreover, looming on the horizon is the issue of the so-called orphan drugs, the expensive drugs that are used to treat rare diseases. In two thousand and twelve, the federal government announced it was working on an orphan drug framework for Canada, but this has yet to materialize. To their credit, the members of the Canadian Life and Health Insurance Association have developed a risk pooling framework for fully insured private drug plans to share the cost of very expensive drug treatments. So in summary, a lot of ideas have been put forward for ensuring that all Canadians have access to prescription drugs without bankrupting them, but I think it's very unfortunate that so little progress has been made from a national perspective, especially in a country like Canada. And from a very practical perspective, as a cardiologist, we spend all of this money putting expensive stents in people, and then we don't spring for the drugs that it takes to keep the stents open as soon as they walk out the door. How can that possibly make any sense? So now the ugly. We've had the good, the bad, here's the ugly. I'd like to turn what is likely to become ugly, in terms of a renewed era of saber rattling between the provincial and territorial governments and the federal government, and further balkanization of healthcare across jurisdictions. If we go back to the mid nineteen nineties, the federal government unilaterally reduced the cash transfer for health by six billion dollars over two years on the heels of a recession that saw reductions in real per capita health spending from nineteen ninety-three through nineteen ninety-six. For the provinces, this further eroded both the real and symbolic value of the historical federal-provincial cost sharing, which of course was always fifty-fifty when it was envisioned. In their January nineteen ninety-seven renewed vision document, the provincial and territorial health ministers reported that federal contributions had dropped to sixteen percent, one-six. As a result of the three health accords, the Canada Health Transfer now represents just under twenty-two percent of provincial and territorial health spending, but with the December two thousand and eleven announcement of the new fiscal framework, that is about to decrease. In its two thousand and thirteen fiscal sustainability report, the Parliamentary Budget Office has projected the impact of the new arrangement over the two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen time horizon. The results indicate that the Canada Health Transfer, as a percentage of provincial and territorial and municipal spending, will eventually decline to twelve percent. To my mind, it's only a question of time before the provinces and territories mount a renewed challenge to the federal government's moral authority to enforce the Canada Health Act. In fact, the first salvo was fired in the summer of two thousand and twelve, when the Council of the Federation Working Group on Fiscal Arrangements estimated that the ten-year period forward to two thousand and twenty-three, the provinces and territories will receive twenty-five billion dollars less in CHT cash under the new fiscal framework, and this was echoed in the two thousand and fourteen Ontario budget. Demographic aging is also going to increase tensions. Atlantic Canada, where I grew up, is already older than the population as a whole, and this is going to be exacerbated. By two thousand and thirty, almost three in ten residents of Newfoundland and Labrador will be sixty-five and older compared to just one in five nationally. Since the worldwide recession of two thousand and eight, industrialized countries have been reining in health spending, and Canada's no different. According to Kihi, nominal increases in total health spending have dropped by half to an average three percent over the past three years, which represents a small drop in real per capita spending. In my view, however, if, in my view, however, we have to ask if we've truly bent the cost curve, or if we've just pushed some demand and costs out to the future. The current issue of the British Medical Journal has an editorial that describes the finances of the English National Health Service as "the tanker en route for the iceberg," with the prediction that the collision will occur before two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. On the positive side, however, the Prime Minister's dismissal of the Premier's request for a Health Innovation Fund resulted in the formation of the Council of the Federation Healthcare Innovation Working Group. The CMA and the Canadian Nurses Association and the Health Action Lobby were delighted to have been heavily engaged in the first iteration of its work, although more recently, our level of engagement has been diminished. So last, I'd like to comment briefly on what we should do next, what we need to do next. While all provinces have some sort of senior strategy, there's been very little, if any, national policy attention on seniors' care. In two thousand and eight, David Foote, who is a demographer, stated that we have a window of opportunity to improve healthcare before the baby boomers make their peak healthcare demands in the two thousand and twenties and thirties. So time is running short. The first boomers will reach the age of seventy-five in two thousand and twenty-one, according to Kihi- According to Kihi, per capita spending jumps by one-third for the seventy to seventy-four age group and seventy-five to seventy-nine age groups, and continues to escalate thereafter. We believe that there's an urgent need for a national senior strategy that includes the following key elements. First of all, community and institutional human and physical infrastructure capacity that covers the continuum of care across home case care to facility-based care through to palliative and end-of-life care. Secondly, more support for informal caregivers, like families who have to bear much of the brunt. And third, addressing funding issues such as providing tax incentives for individuals to save ahead to cover health needs that are not covered by the publicly funded health system. We'll be saying more about that over the next year as we go into the federal election. So there is a way forward. Our job surely must be to enable each other, professional groups and patients and citizens, governments, community agencies, hospitals, regional authorities, we're all partners in this. Courage means doing the right thing, even if it's the hard thing to do. Our country needs us to be courageous. I'm looking forward to the discussion, and thanks again for the invitation to be here.
Thank you, Dr. Simpson, for your presentation and for presenting on the good, bad, and the ugly, and your insight on the Canadian Wheat Times. I will now call upon our third speaker, Dr. Ray Dionne Dan.
Thanks. I've got a fun presentation. Where is it? Here we go. Excellent. Okay. Hmm. I'll go for it, my esteemed panel over here, and I realize I'm tragically underdressed. And I blame the helmet, it's got the hair thing going on, and as an academic, I think it completes a certain image, and I'm proud of that. I'm going to start by taking a poll. Oh, by the way, we're tweeting, right? We're live tweeting today? Is that right? What's the hashtag again? What's the hashtag? HealthLeadershipMatters, twenty-four characters. That's, that's all right. Anyway, so I'm, I'm big on Twitter, so if you want to tag me in anything, it's my handle is my last name, so go ahead and do so. So I want to take a quick poll. I want to begin by asking you, how many of you, prior to learning about this evening's event, had heard of or knew what the Canada Health Accord was? Great. How many did not? Be honest now. Excellent. Good, honest people. Now, how many of you are not in the healthcare or health research industry? Excellent. I would hope for more, but that's, that's a good representation. And I'm asking because, because of this, because the health accord really represents in many ways the philosophical keystone for socialized medicine. If we think of, of socialized medicine as being at its heart the redistribution of wealth for the purposes of improving the lived experience, the healthy lived experience of Canadians, that's what we're talking about here, a strategy, a formula, a system, a policy, a philosophy for redistributing wealth for the purposes of making everyone healthy. And beyond that, it's also about making sure certain vulnerable populations are taken care of to the extent that their needs require. And this is a representation of a protest that happened a couple months ago in Halifax as the accord neared its end, and word of the replacement was coming to the forefront, where individuals were concerned that certain key demographics may not be serviced in a post-accord world. What demographics? Well, the obvious ones are Aboriginals, seniors, veterans, refugees. We've already seen those populations be somewhat targeted in the new domain that's emerging. But I want to talk about today some of the more overt, broad-based, broad-spectrum ways of looking at need from a demographics perspective. And I want to begin by talking about the Health Council of Canada. If you don't know, the Health Council was established at the same time as a health accord, as an agency for helping to, to keep track of what's happening and for sharing information with Canadians. And they shut down a couple months ago as the accord neared its end. And one of the last things they published was that they didn't believe that the accord led to major changes, the changes that were expected, the positive changes that were expected. That's interesting, because in my recollection, the accord was a thrown-together pro tem sort of agreement that was supposed to be a stopgap measure for other things, more solid and well-thought-out procedures came into place. But strangely, a series of expectations were thrown on top of those. And among those expectations was a desire to service certain kinds of populations in need. So I am the numbers guy on the panel, so I'm going to tell a story with numbers. There are lots of ways to tell stories with numbers. There's lots of numbers to choose from to tell stories with, and the story I'm going to tell involves fairly obvious demographic changes in terms of age and working capacity across the country. Because this is a story about diversity across the country, different provinces have different kinds of people and therefore different kinds of health need. It's already been brought up by another panelist that if we talk solely about aging population as being the vanguard of the crisis that awaits us, it's not the full extent of the story. It's not just about aging, it's about the health system's ability to respond to aging. And I think that's a fairly nuanced and accurate way of looking at it, but we mustn't lose sight of the fact that we are aging. And the ways in which healthcare responds and has needs associated with different age demographics is critical to all this. So some, three key points I want to leave you with, even though I'm just starting. First is that populations are not homogeneously distributed across Canada. We are not all the same people. And we like to think about delineations in terms of province, and that's useful. Different populations have different health needs at different times, different times in their life and different times historically. And part of this challenge is to project into the near and far future what those needs are going to be, and one of the tools we use for doing so is demographic analyses. And lastly, different health needs may have different costs. If you're not already aware, the proposed replacement for the health cord has at its root a plan for reimbursing provinces or transferring wealth based upon their economic activity. And economic activity seems to me a very weird indicator of health need. There are other more rational indicators, and we're going to look at a couple of these right now. So some things to keep in mind. Odd that the slide is cut off, but some things to keep in mind. First is that total healthcare spending on the typical older person, seventy-five to seventy-nine, is about ten times greater than a young person. That's fairly obvious to us, but we can't forget that. Next is that when you're over seventy-nine, the, the price increases dramatically, double for an eighty-five-year-old relative to a seventy-four, seventy-nine-year-old. Over the childbearing years, fifteen to forty-nine, I know fifteen-year-old childbearing, I can't, that's how we do these things, right? Average healthcare spending per capita is much higher for women than for men, and in fact, for women, the healthcare spending is dramatically higher for men in those key working years, thirty or thirty-four. Now, we used to think that men sort of caught up later in life. A generation ago, we said that older men, the fifties, would acquire also cardiovascular diseases, and our, our health needs then made up for the difference or younger, but we're seeing that gap kind of narrow in recent years as women enter the workforce more vociferously and actively. So let's look at certain key provinces. The first is Nova Scotia. Nova Scotia has one of the oldest populations in Canada. In fact, their share of seniors is about seventeen point two percent. This is based on the latest census data, which is the highest proportion in Canada, and a median age of about forty-three. That's pretty high, forty-three. In fact, globally, that's extremely high. And it's, it's second only to Newfoundland. So there's something happening in Atlantic Canada where we're clustering a lot of our older people. Why is that? It's due, we think, to both lower fertility, having fewer kids out there, and also migratory losses. People are leaving those areas and going somewhere else. Where? I think you know, but we're going to find out. They're going here, going to Alberta, right? So Alberta has the youngest population of the provinces, median age of about thirty-six, and their, their share of the elderly, and I apologize for making the elderly sound like a burden, that's not the intent here, they're just a slightly costlier demographic, their share is only eleven percent, and that's the smallest for any, any province. More importantly, they have the highest proportion of working-age individuals and a low unemployment rate as well. So working age combined with actual workers, so a very large economic activity happening there. They have incredible gains from both fertility and migration, so they're having lots of kids and people are migrating there at a key point in their lives when they're likely to be healthier and physically and economically active. British Columbia is a fascinating case. So their median age is forty-one, but they have the highest life expectancy in the country for some strange reason, and they have a very large proportion of individuals over sixty-five as well. So it's a retirement community compared to the rest of the country, and that has certain specific sorts of health needs as well. So let's look at the, the Territories. We tend to lump the Territories together in these sorts of analyses, and that's not fair because they're quite different, but yet I've lumped them together again because I have limited time, why not? So they're not homogeneous. Yukon has a very large proportion of working-class individuals, about seventy point five percent of their population is working age, and a relatively low median age. Northwest Territories is a young population, and this is reflective of the Aboriginal trend in general globally. Amerindian Aboriginal peoples tend to be younger right now, and that's actually a very positive thing. Younger populations usually have a trajectory of better economic performance down the road. Nunavut is the youngest population in Canada, if you lump them in with the provinces, and the median age is about twenty-four point seven, that's extraordinary. In fact, a very large proportion, almost a third, is under fifteen years of age, and that's comparable to some of the exploding economies in Asia, India and China, well, not China, India. This is a fun graph. Here we try to compare the half-providence, Alberta, with the have-not province, Newfoundland, Labrador. So the way to look at this, over here we have men, over here we have women, and this curve is for Newfoundland, and this curve is for Alberta, and this is a distribution according to age. What we see here is both genders are about the same, is that Newfoundland has a bulge amongst the elderly, whereas Alberta, their largest or their, their bulge happens in late-middle age, but also in the high-performing, high-active, high-economically-active age groups over there. So Ontario, another supposedly half-providence, even though it's debatable these days, right? Somewhat similar to Alberta, except for a key difference, and that is, we don't have as many of the very young. So that suggests that in the immediate near future, we may not have as many economically-active individuals, that's a proportion of our population, as Alberta will have unless there is extraordinary new immigration happening. And that's Alberta, pretty bottom-heavy. That shows us that they are really well-prepared for economic growth, and their health needs are in the reproductive years, so that has a very specific sort of profile for investment. I like this graph. This shows us who is aging the fastest. And the way you read this is between light blue and the purple, I guess. Light blue is 2006, the purple 2011, and this shows us the change in the proportion of people who are over sixty-five. Now, that's the Canadian average. Excuse me? And no one's getting younger, strangely enough, but Quebec and the Atlantic provinces are aging faster than everybody else. Again, for the reasons we suggested earlier, both due to lower fertility rates and outmigration. Right? So some more points to, to absorb here. Someone was pointing at the graph just now, put it back there. Finished pointing? Excellent. Okay. From the last sentence, men outnumbered women in the working-age population in these key provinces, Alberta, Saskatchewan, Northwest Territories, and Nunavut. That's not too surprising. The younger the demographic, the more men there are typically, because men tend to die off earlier as they get older. And Alberta and to the lesser extent Saskatchewan attracted a lot of people in recent years as well. This is not surprising to anybody here, but it's nice to see it on the screen so we know what the actual facts are so we can talk about them. These are the realities that we're dealing with. People are leaving certain parts of the country and they're going to other parts of the country, and those people that leave tend to be healthier, they tend to be younger, they tend to be of a certain profile that require a different health investment than the people that do not leave. This is the proportions of seniors living in metropolitan areas, because they're also an urbanizing population. An important thing happened in 2010 globally, for the first time in human history, majority of people, the first time in human history, live in cities, not outside of cities, and Canada's no exception, we're actually urbanizing quite quickly. And so it's important to, when we think of Canadian health, to think about urban health more so, I think, than rural health, and that's kind of the trajectory we're going in. So the red represents the Canadian average, and about fourteen percent of, of, of Canada is seniors. But certain cities have a higher quote-unquote burden of seniors. Again, I don't mean to use that word disparagingly, it's just seniors have certain needs that non-se seniors don't have. If you look at over here, those cities in the half-provinces, Edmonton, Calgary, Saskatoon, have a lower proportion of seniors than the national average, and over here, Peterborough, Torrevier, in the have-not provinces, even though Peterborough is kind of a half-province, but it's a have-not city, they have a very large burden of elderly. So it's important to remember that these distributions have resolution that's local, and there are differences that are local as well. So this is infant mortality. So if you're, if you're looking to assess the quality of a healthcare system, there are a variety of indicators to apply, among them infant mortality rates. Canada has amongst the lowest infant mortality rate in the world, usually around five deaths per thousand live births or so, that's kind of our basement, but it has this gradient domestically. We find that Nova Scotia actually has a low infant mortality rate, and Manitoba, Alberta, Saskatchewan have a high one, which is a little bit interesting, isn't it? I mean, I just spent the last few minutes telling you how wonderful Alberta and Saskatchewan are doing, and now I point out in fact that they've got this issue happening. So it's a complicated soup of factors that are advising how we need to spend our money. We don't really know why they have higher numbers, a lot of theories around certain kinds of populations in need. I think there's going to be a discussion afterwards about this, about there's debates happening all the time over why there is this gradient happening. And then we're back to life expectancy. So I've showed you so far about the, the demographics as a kind of need. Now here is a measurement of outcome, of actual measurable health. Life expectancy, I must warn you, is not a very good measurement of population health. And one of the many reasons is that just because you live longer doesn't mean you live healthier or happier. Okay? So let's not lose that as we have this discussion. But as was mentioned in the previous presentation, there is a, a pretty dramatic differences domestically when it comes to life expectancy, with the Territories having very low life expectancy compared to the national average, and B.C. having a very high national average. And as was mentioned, there are certain neighborhoods in this country that really struggle and other neighborhoods that do quite well. So we must not ever let ourselves think about this population nationally as a monolith. It has complexity and resolution locally. Few more slides here, because graphs are fun, everyone likes graphs. So this one is kind of fun. It's the most recent data I could find, 2009. Obviously, that was five years ago, and things have changed since then, but the numbers haven't changed that much. This is how much each province currently spends per capita. Now, our first speaker showed us provincial spending as a fraction of GDP, this shows us per capita, and we find that Alberta actually is one of the higher spenders. So these half-provinces, Manitoba doesn't count as a half-province, but these half-provinces are spending a fair amount. I've just spent a lot of time showing you the demographics change, the kind of expenditures that we need to, to put into place. What if we could change that graph to account for demographic differences? We can do this. Epidemiologists call it standardizing. We can standardize by age and other factors like gender. So let's, let's try that. We don't have to do it near now because someone else did it for us. They did it over here. So the, the pink graph shows us what the expenditures per capita are if they've been standardized. What that means is pretending that the demographics had no impact, and we do that by choosing one population and making the rest of them look like that population. If you don't know the math, don't worry about it, trust me on this. Okay? What we find here is that even after we've accounted for the demographic changes, Alberta is still spending more than everybody else. Why is that? It has to do, I believe, with certain choices that populations make. One can choose to invest in a burgeoning economy, a burgeoning population. One can choose to lay down the groundwork for an explosion of population that's coming. One can choose to subsidize your vaccination programs or to make sure your waiting lists are small, right? So they have the money to do so, obviously, that helps, but let's not lose sight of the fact that a lot of this is explainable by demographics, but also is explainable by political expediency and choice. So my final slide. Some important thoughts to remember. Since the two thousand four accord, some positive things have happened. As was mentioned, life expectancy for Canadians rose overall. That's a good thing, or is it? Right? Life expectancy isn't always this panacea for goodness. Second, as was mentioned earlier as well, certain key diseases look better. So mortality rates for certain key diseases are better, like certain cancers, like cardiovascular disease. Now, a lot of that may be due to something we call detection bias, where we're looking for things that are a little differently now than we did ten years ago, we're classifying them a little differently than we did ten years ago. So when we tease out those factors, I'm sure these things aren't as dramatic as they once seemed. Doesn't matter. Some things have improved. And lastly, polls actually show that Canadians are actually more satisfied today than they were ten years ago. What does that mean? I don't know, but it's something, right? So, some things to remember, though. First is that needs change. Needs change with shifting demographics and with economic activity distribution. So that means is, right now, we see how things are. Where are the old people? Where are the young women of reproductive age? Where are the people needing certain kinds of services? But that's going to change dramatically as more migration happens, as different kinds of economic investments happen in different parts of the country. And any system that you put into place can't be static, it must be responsive to certain kinds of change. The current plan is to be responsive to economic change alone, not to demographic change, not to migratory change, and not to political change. So among the things that I would constitute as political change is a desire or a decision to invest in a mental health infrastructure, for example. So where we decide to put mental health facilities is also where we're going to have people moving to those facilities who need that kind of service, and that will change your demographics further. We have other issues, as was mentioned, that need to be really sorely addressed. Among them are wait times. Our wait times are quite extraordinarily bad for an OECD country globally, and there's no excuse for it to be so. That's why we have these things that are popping up in the corners of our health system like medical tourism that are meant to somewhat alleviate the pressure of poor wait times. I will stop there as I watch the eyes glaze over, and I'll let someone else take my spot. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dionne Nandan, for sharing about the impact of the Canada Health Accord on diverse populations. I will now call upon our final speaker of the evening, Dr. Jack Kitz, President and CEO of the Auto Hospital.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for all being here tonight. On March thirty-first this year, two thousand fourteen, the Health Council of Canada closed its doors for good. The council was established in the two thousand and three, two thousand and four health accords, and as Dr. Simpson noted, to report on progress of the accords. And the ten years of its existence were both progressive and tumultuous, not unlike the ups and downs of Canada's healthcare systems more generally. Whether or not you agree with the decision to close the council, or whether you even care, I believe there is a need to assess what will be lost. Here's a disturbing reality. Healthcare in Canada isn't nearly as good as most Canadians believe it to be. So how is that possible? Ten years ago, the health accords were offered up as a way to fix our ailing health system. In the decade that followed, we've seen a steady growth in healthcare spending, and health reform initiatives have been launched in every province and territory across the country. And yet we still haven't hit the mark. So what went wrong? In the next twenty minutes or so, I hope to lay out a foundation for doing the business of health reform differently. Because Canada should have a high-performing health system, one that is truly world-class. The question is, how do we get there? Last September, the council produced a comprehensive report on the progress of health reform since the accords were signed in two thousand three and two thousand four. Reporting on progress was the cornerstone of what the Health Council of Canada was set up to do, and it had a good track record in detailing how healthcare has improved or not over the past ten years. The report, entitled Better Health, Better Care, Better Value for All, took a broad macro view of what has been achieved under the health accords. We looked at where we succeeded in driving change and improving healthcare and where we fell short, and we outlined an approach for Canada that, if adopted, should lead to better results in the next ten years. We argued that reform has to be done differently. The reality is that although Canada is one of the top spenders internationally when it comes to healthcare, our results are less than stellar, especially when compared to our peer countries in the OECD. For example, when it comes to health status, Canada ranks pretty much in the middle. Although our life expectancy, as you've seen earlier, has improved, and fewer Canadians are dying from cancer and cardiovascular disease, our rates of obesity and chronic disease are rising, a troubling trend for our future. Our ranking is even worse, actually near the bottom, when we look at areas like wait times for elective surgeries. Likewise, it's harder to get an appointment with your family doctor than most other countries, and many Canadians still don't have an electronic medical or health record, a critical element in well-coordinated quality care today. Perhaps even more troubling are the differences in access to primary care, affordable drugs, and home care services across the country. This, in a country that values equity as a core principle within its health system, even rates of chronic disease vary between provinces and territories. It turns out, when it comes to your health, where you live in Canada does matter. And what about our spending? The health accords were supported by billions of dollars of new public funding. As a result, we now spend over two hundred and seven billion dollars a year in healthcare, more per capita than countries like the United Kingdom, Australia, and New Zealand. But ten years after the health accords promised reform, we haven't changed how we spend that money. The big-ticket items of hospitals, drugs, and doctors continue to dominate our healthcare spending. Meanwhile, the health needs of Canadians are changing rapidly. Preventing and managing chronic disease has become a growing priority, and when it comes to home care and long-term care services, we are falling behind as our society ages and demand for services outstrips our capacity to respond. Those of us who work in hospitals see this firsthand as we deal with high numbers of ALC patients, those patients who no longer need acute hospital care but have no place to go. They are often elderly patients who need home care or long-term nursing care. It's actually worth noting that the Netherlands is one high-income country that has changed its pattern of healthcare spending over the last ten years. That country reduced the proportion of healthcare dollars it spent on hospitals and drugs and dramatically increased its investments in long-term care. Interestingly, the Netherlands emerged from the last decade as a high-performing health system. I could continue to cite statistics, but the point I want to drive home is this: given the resources we have, the results we are achieving are not nearly good enough. If the health accords set out to transform our system for a generation, then we have failed. One of the key reasons we have not succeeded is that we do not have an overarching plan for health reform in Canada, one where we all agree on a shared set of goals that collectively we must achieve. The health accords set broad policy and program objectives, but they lack that clear set of goals. Without defined goals to measure against, it is impossible to determine whether reform objectives were met and to hold governments accountable. This became abundantly clear to the Health Council as we attempted to report on progress in such areas as primary healthcare, Aboriginal health, and health promotion. In a world of change management, whether you're in business or in healthcare, unless you set specific goals and align your system to achieve them, successful change will not occur. That was the weakness of the health accords and the past decade of reform efforts. And unless we do the business of health reform differently in the future, we are destined to repeat that failure. Ten years down the road, we'll wonder why we're discussing the same issues and achieving the same results. So what is possible? In preparing our September two thousand thirteen report, the Health Council looked across Canada and internationally to see where health reform has been more successful and why. We reviewed academic literature, research data, and many of the transformation agendas and frameworks that have been developed and implemented. We found that the Triple Aim framework, developed by the Institute for Healthcare Improvement, has been increasingly used and adapted in the United States and parts of Canada to guide quality improvement efforts. Building on this framework, the council proposed a set of goals that could guide health reform in Canada, namely, better health, better care, and better value for all Canadians. But for this framework to be accepted by Canadians and their governments, we argue it must include the quintessential Canadian value: equity. Everything we do to improve healthcare has to benefit and be seen to benefit all Canadians. So what does better health, better care, better value for all Canadians look like? Well, better health means that our health outcomes improve, there's less obesity and less chronic disease, for example. Better care means the average Canadian has faster access to primary care, shorter waits to see a specialist, and their transition from hospital to home is better, smoother, and faster. The bottom line: measurable improvements in the quality of healthcare that Canadians receive. Better value is a trickier one in the Canadian context. Essentially, it means that we spend our money to deliver healthcare services that are more appropriate, more efficient, and more effective. In other words, better quality for the money we spend. Although we spend more on healthcare than many OECD countries, their performances is often better than ours. So I ask the question, do we need more dollars, or is it more productivity that we need? Finally, in stressing the word "all," we emphasize the importance of equity. It means fewer discrepancies in health status and healthcare among provinces and territories. Where you live and how much you earn shouldn't matter when it comes to achieving good health status, but it does, and as you've heard tonight, it really does. I think we can all agree that these goals are laudable and that they should resonate with all Canadians. The question is, how do we achieve them? It will require a new way of doing the business of healthcare in Canada. To use a sports analogy, every province and territory would be rowing in the same direction. But shared goals alone are not sufficient. We cannot achieve those goals without the active and sustained support of five key enablers. Number one, you won't be surprised, as emerging health leaders, is leadership. Number two, policies and legislation. Three, leadership capacity building. Four, innovation and spread. And five, measurement and public reporting. This approach is sadly a great departure from the past, but it builds on the experience of the accords going forward. So in the time I have remaining, I want to focus on what I believe is the most important factor in bringing Canada back to the platform in terms of healthcare, and that is leadership. In Canada, we expect leadership in our federal, provincial, and territorial governments. We also look for leadership in those who head our healthcare organizations at the national, provincial, and local levels. But we also need individuals who are willing to manage change, align goals and activities, and infuse good performance measurement practices at the front lines of healthcare delivery. In other words, there is room for leadership at all levels of the healthcare system, and we need to invest in it. So what would leaders do, actually all of you in this room, including the non-healthcare leaders, if the approach that the Health Council suggests is put into action? We would be prepared to agree on a set of goals, add metrics, and realign policy and spending priorities as the evidence dictates. We would be looking far into the future and mapping out strategies for sustainable programs, programs to meet the needs of not only today's citizens, but the next generations as well. Leaders would also focus on capacity building. They would provide the tools to make change happen, and leaders would insist on measuring and publicly reporting performance. If the provincial and territorial governments could agree on what to measure, how to collect the data, and commit to reporting comparable information, it would allow all Canadians to know if and how their healthcare is improving. It would also help us determine where programs and services need to be improved to create more equitable care for all. And finally, it would allow us to map improvements against the dollars that we've invested. It would also allow us to see in very concrete terms where we get the best value, better quality, at less cost. So let me close with a final plea of sorts. All of us have a stake in the future of our healthcare system. Most of us, our families and our friends, have firsthand experience with healthcare in Canada, both good, actually in many cases very good, but also bad. But unlike most Canadians, we know that we need to make healthcare better, much better. We need to see greater progress in reforming healthcare than we have seen over the past ten years, and we need a high-performing health system that will benefit all Canadians today and for generations to come. And to achieve this and return to one of the best healthcare systems in the world, all governments, healthcare organizations, healthcare providers, and the public have a role to play. We need the federal government to be more engaged, and the provinces and territories to think beyond their borders. We need to start all conversations with a focus on better health, better care, and better value for all Canadians. And we need active and sustained support for the enablers that are required to achieve real change. It's time to refocus our health reform agenda. It's time to truly create that fix for a generation almost ten years ago. We must, and we can, do better, and that, ladies and gentlemen, means doing things differently. So will Canadians actually miss the Health Council of Canada? I don't know. Probably not. But there should be at least some who wonder why governments let it close. I look forward to your questions and comments and joining the panel. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kitz, for your presentation and for emphasizing on the importance of equity and healthcare leadership. So we will now transition to our panel discussion on leadership engagement in healthcare and new directions. So I would like to call upon Dr. Abdallah, President of the Academy of Medicine Ottawa, to the podium to lead the panel discussion.
Thanks very much. So this is the time when I want to get your juices flowing. So may I ask, now that we've been sitting for a while and getting all of this great information in our head, evidence shows that information stays in people's heads when they do a little bit of physical activity. So I'm just going to ask you to stand up for a little bit, shake your arms out, get the blood flowing, because now we want people to ask their questions, right? So I'm going to be like Monty Hall, and I'm going to walk around and see if I can get people to ask questions, and if you don't mind, I'll have you sit back down again, and we'll start this session and get a little bit of excitement into it. So thank you very much for all of the high-level executive points of view that we've received this evening. I'd like to start the discussion by giving everyone here, and hopefully Dr. Reichlis that's out there in the stratosphere, an opportunity to talk about how members in this room, leaders in waiting, leaders that are here already, leaders in transition, can make a difference, can participate in the healthcare system transformation. So I'll start with Chris first, and Ray, and Jack, and then hopefully Michael. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Test, test, test. There we go. Well, for me, you know, leadership is a complicated concept. We all kind of know what it is when we see it, but it's hard to kind of define what it is. But for me, leadership at either the political level, the medical level, the healthcare professional level, or the administrative level, means that we need to stop being afraid. And what we need to stop being afraid of is being accountable for our performance, and we need to stop being afraid to publicly report our performance. I think arguably, that's been one of the single biggest barriers, and Dr. Kitz alluded to this. And in my comments earlier, I referred to the fact that the provinces seem to be very steadfast in resisting publicly reporting their data, because they're afraid of what the results are going to be. So we need to get over ourselves, you know? The other countries who are successful with their healthcare system, they publicly report their data, and this is a great democratizing force, you know? There's patient power out there that will leverage their political muscle when they have the information that they need to make the decision. So from a professional point of view, I think we need to embrace what Jeff Turnbull has often talked about, which is our civic professionalism, you know? This notion that we're not just accountable to the patient in front of us, but we're accountable to our system and to our performance. And we have a responsibility, as professional groups, to help improve the healthcare system. So a very practical example of this, I think, is some of the work that we're doing with the Wait Time Alliance, where we're actively partnering with provincial governments to start improving their wait-time performance. So as a result, we have the Canadian Association of, the Canadian Society of Anesthesiology, working with the Nova Scotia Government to start publicly reporting access to chronic pain clinics. We have the Canadian Association of Gastroenterology. They said, hey, we'll partner with Newfoundland and Labrador, and we're going to be the first to start developing a colonoscopy wait times. So these are the little incremental things we can do. But, you know, I say, don't let the professions off the hook. This is partly for us to fix too, and I think the message we want to get is, we want to be there. We want to help. We're not here to embarrass governments. We want to help. We want to make things better. So civic professionalism, I think, is leadership in the medical professional context.
Thank you, Chris. Dr. Ray?
Am I on now? Excellent. So as a data scientist, of course, I echo everything that was just said. Data is a path to clarity, somewhat, a path to objectivity, and there's certainly been a hesitation for provincial governments to be willing to benchmark performance and to compare performance, even though that should not be the end of the story. But I'm going to answer the question in a bit more abstract way, and to suggest that sometimes leadership is not about doing, it's about understanding. And how many of, I asked the question when I first spoke, is how many of us really knew deeply about the Accord before this evening? And what I want to suggest to you is that it is representative of the kind of value we wish to inculcate in our civic process. So even if you don't care about budgetary issues and about the transfer payments between governments and dry things like that, we have to care about the kind of values we wish our society to embrace and to reflect. And I think there's an opportunity to be a thought leader in taking the time to figure out what you care about. Do you care about justice? And by justice, I mean, is it important to you that all Canadians, all taxpayers, all citizens, have somewhat equal access to the care that most of us enjoy? Is it important to you that those in need are taken care of to the extent to which our society is able? Is it important to you that those who do all the work are better rewarded? That's on the other side of the spectrum. What are your personal values? And how you land on this issue, in many ways, will reflect the kind of person that you are and the kind of society that you want. So I think it's one thing to talk about the actions that we'll take, the policies that we will advocate for, the groups that we'll join, the language that we'll speak, and so forth. But that tends to be a bit nonproductive in the long term, unless we've also taken the time to figure out what we want from all of this in terms of the kind of society we want to build.
Thank you. Go ahead. You got a big voice, Jack. Come on.
Testing? Okay. So it's on when the light's off. Go figure. Much brighter guy's next to me. I would say three things. The first is, we need to collectively admit that we have a big problem with our health system. It's very disturbing to see the polls. You showed that, you know, the wait times are longer than any country, can't get access to, we're the worst in getting access to primary care, and yet the satisfaction polls are way up. They're actually higher. So I think that's a huge problem, is that we just don't know how bad the system is. And I think it's because the emergent or urgent acute care system is phenomenal. And that's what most people feel. They save my life. I get wonderful letters as COO of the hospital for saving lives. But the transition to all the other levels of care that make up the system, or the primary care on the front end, is not working. So I think we have to get over the fact that we have world-class acute hospital care, but beyond that, the system is really, really struggling. The second is leadership, as I said, and it's leadership at all levels. The federal government has got to be engaged, otherwise we'll get more disparity between the provinces. I mean, can you imagine being a Canadian trying to figure out which province you might move to because the healthcare isn't going to be very, very good in one of them? And it's even worse. It's actually regional, as some of the speakers pointed out. So leadership at all levels, not just federal government, but also the provincial, territorial, and the organization, as Dr. Simpson said, a call to physicians to step up as leaders in the system and show the, reconnect with that sense of purpose. And then finally, with, we admit we have a problem, we've identified leadership at all levels, and then it's really, it's not going to move if you don't set clear outcome goals. We talk a lot about nice processes in healthcare, but clear outcome goals that are measurable through metrics and publicly reported.
Thank you. Is Michael Reiklis around?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, indeed. Do you heard the question?
Yes. I, 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 most, I think there've been a couple of points made that I agree with. We need leadership at all levels. I agree with that. I think that we must start rapidly engaging patients and communities in our processes of deliberation. And finally, I would like to recommend that we completely change our healthcare meeting. Like the people on the podium, I've been to, you know, a couple of thousand meetings the last forty years, and I don't know if anything has really changed. So I'd like to, I'd like to go to a meeting where it's open, that the public is there, and the questions aren't, what should we do, rather, the question is, for example, in Hamilton, they have demonstrated how, that by integrating specialists into primary healthcare teams, they can virtually eliminate wait for psychiatric care. And then the next point would be, how do we do that in our city for all specialty services? And then, as people start to make their comments, for example, a doctor might say, well, I'm not paid to practice that way. Then the back and forth could be, well, we'll guarantee your, what you made last year plus three percent. Are you then prepared to work differently? I, I, I think that when you go, as Dr. Kitz has said, has said, our, our record is not very good. We have the worst access to family doctors and specialists amongst the eleven countries that the Commonwealth Fund regularly measures. And yet, within our country, we have many examples where we could completely change that. Now, healthcare is a lot more than just seeing the doctor, but that tends to be the top political issue about Medicare still. And I think we have to change our meetings, change our dialogue, so that we're now focused on how we implement the many good examples we've developed that show we can fix the problems in our system.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I want to open this up now. This is an opportunity for you to get up and ask your questions or your concerns. Yes, absolutely. Please identify yourself and speak loudly, hopefully, or I can share you a microphone.
Green light goes on. My name is Kate Rex. I'm with the Canadian Physiotherapy Association, and I actually wanted to build on the last point that Dr. Reiklis made, as well as the point that Dr. Kitz had made about the transition to the next, the next system or the next level of care, is where the tragedy is in the Canadian system. And my biggest concern, working in policy and government relations, is how do we engage decision-makers who are working with the health authorities within governments to say the mechanism is broken? While we have legislation for primary healthcare teams in Ontario, the biggest problem that I see, and I apologize, I'm not going to be very popular in this room, I don't think, we fund doctors and nurses first and forget about all of the other professionals that are necessary to ensure that rehabilitation occurs, that proper diets are being followed, that we have access to the most appropriate radiation technology, but don't overperform tests when they're not needed. And so my question, I guess, is, how do we engage leaders to talk about the next level of change? And we've been talking about it, I guess, since 1979 with Tommy Douglas saying, we have to get this, beyond this funding discussion to, how do we put the patient at the center of care? So I will ask Dr. Kitz, actually, how do you see the change happening to improve the next level of care beyond the hospital?
So that's an excellent question, because I think if you actually, any of you who take up Dr. Simpson's challenge to read the Health Accords, there are ten themes, and you'll read it, and you'll say, that could have been written today. Every single thing in that accord is still far from where it needs to be, and it could have been written today with more urgency. And that was, that was ten years ago. And there was an urgency then. Most of us were here when they were created. So we, the progress has not been substantial enough to even change the Health Accords. It's the same themes, but we got to, we got to actually measure progress. And I think that comes to it. The health system in Canada is really spending on doctors and hospitals. Okay? Now, you throw in drugs, and you've got the vast majority of healthcare dollars spent. And we're losing sight of the fact that it's much bigger than that. And it's no, it's no coincidence that the Netherlands improved its health system status by removing, reducing the amount of money spent on hospitals and drugs, and investing in things that maybe keep people out of hospital and off of drugs. So I think we need to understand that. But I think the most important two things are, as Dr. Simpson said, professionals getting back to advocating more for their patients, and I realize it's been twenty-five years of advocating, and it gets a little bit worn thin, but also patients and the public stop accepting the fact that Canada still has a great health system. It doesn't, and we need to admit that.
I, 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 yes. I think you hit the nail on the head. And one of the things that's really troubled me over the past ten years, because one of my roles is as a, I have an operational leadership role in my hospital, is one of the things that's been troubling is that there's enhanced accountability to our institutions, less accountability to the patient experience, which of course is only for a moment of time in our institutions. And it's at these transition points, before they come into hospital, after they leave hospital, that's where the inefficiencies are generated and where the suboptimal outcomes are born. So we wind up, as a system and as providers in the system, answering to our institutions a very kind of vertical sort of orientation, when in fact, we need to orient our accountabilities and our thinking longitudinally across many care venues as patients navigate through these outpatient and inpatient experiences. And that includes lots of other care providers, lots of other experiences. So this is where patient power, I think, is really going to help. And one of the things I keep saying over and over again is, we as healthcare providers need to really help to inform and empower our patients, because ultimately, they'll show us the right way to go. They know that their care in hospital is excellent, as Dr. Kitz has said, but they also know that as soon as they walk out the door, it's the Wild West again. So as they organize and become more empowered, I think we're going to be able to learn a lot from them, and they'll be the ones exercising the political power to reorient the way that we fund the system and the way we incent providers to behave and so on.
Many people may or may not know that there is this process in Ontario called Health Links, which is an opportunity for us to get after the people that are high users of the system because they fall into these cracks. And many of that funding actually goes to making sure that transition point ends up becoming a lot more smoother, so it was a point well taken.
Thank you. My name is Donald Sutherland. I've worked in the healthcare system, and I've worked in public health, and I've worked in government, so I'm a bit confused about where the solution might, might lie. And I noticed that we continue to use the phrase "healthcare" as if it meant, as if it meant health. And I think if we can change the language of the discussion, we might engage the public much more effectively. But I would like to ask perhaps Dr. Reiklis to comment about the idea, if we made the federal transfer depend entirely on this accountability that you mentioned at the community level, these wait times and the actual health at the community level, would that function to bypass a lot of the institutional barriers?
Reiklis, are you there?
I am, I am here. That's a very interesting question, Donald, that I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what you mean, but it would be, of course, very difficult, I think it'd be impossible, actually, for the federal government to directly fund sub-provincial healthcare systems. The money would have to go to the provinces. But I certainly feel that if, that the federal government has an opportunity in the next accord, although it's certainly not going to be easy, to demand at least measures from the provinces, that, as Dr. Kitz mentioned, the provinces aren't even cooperating on getting their measures right. And that was obvious, actually, for those of us who were observing at the 2004 Accord. So at the very least, the federal government has to demand that the provinces provide comparable measures in return for any new money. And I also feel the federal government could do a lot in terms of helping to move the system forward, because the provinces are trying to, you know, reinvent wheels in their own jurisdiction, and they're fighting a lot of the same political issues, you know? We really haven't talked much about it today, but that we, we will never have a high-performing health system in Canada unless we can get high-performing medical groups, and that means investing in clinical governance, and that means physicians not just being asked to do the right thing, but part of, being part of a structure where doing the right thing is as natural as your annual performance review. So I, 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 I certainly want the federal government more involved, but I don't see that they could be directly funding sub-provincial regional health authorities, for example.
Just to pick up on your distinction between health and healthcare, I think that's one of the more compelling arguments, I think, for, for federal involvement, is that if we want to achieve health for Canadians, we need to first recognize that about fifty percent of our health status is determined by things that have nothing to do with what I provide for patients or any of the providers here do. It's the social determinants of health. So how do we integrate economic policy and social policy and tax policy with, with healthy public policy? And that's very much in the federal purview. So I think that's really important. The other issue really is, and I think everybody's kind of skirting around this, is, is it even possible to have a national health strategy in a federated system? And that's, that's a very fundamental question. And I think where we've fallen down, perhaps, in the past is because we've developed these very grand strategic plans, and they're eloquent documents, and we look at them again ten years later, and we say, wow, that's a really good idea. We should do that. But there's a very insightful health thinker named Mark Britnall, and Jesse will remember him from last week because you tweeted this. But he, he had a great quote, which was, "Federate where necessary, localize where possible." And this kind of pragmatic approach is, I think, where we need to go next. We need to stop using the absence of a comprehensive national healthcare strategy as an excuse for inaction. And there are lots of things that we could move forward on together. You know, seniors' care is a, is a great example. Every province has a seniors' care strategy. Everybody's thinking about the five percent that, that cause or... Everybody's thinking about the 5% that cause or that use up 60% of the expenses. Why aren't we getting together? Why isn't Alice Wong, the federal Minister of State for seniors, why isn't she saying, "Let me get together with all of our provincial counterparts. We're all doing the same thing, a little bit differently. Surely, we're better than the sum of our parts." So, instead of envisioning this grand fix, let's start with the things that we can do and start that conversation. But I think even more fundamentally, and this is why I really liked your comment, we need to think about health, not just healthcare. I think that's very important.
So, two things. The first is, if you recall the triple framework, the triple aim framework that I described, it's better health, better care, and better value for all. And I really think that the Institute for Health Improvement, the IHI in the United States, has hit the framework right on the head. There's very few things you would do to create a better healthcare system that don't fall into one of those umbrellas. And they include the, all of the social determinants and all the stuff before you get to hospital. So, better health, better care, and better value. But I want to also talk about health, because we're caught in a trap. And as Michael Rakliss said, we've got to start listening to patients more. So, let me just describe what the system is now. And this is including outcome metrics and public reporting. So, a patient in Ottawa needs a hip replacement. If they get in for their hip replacement in less than six months, a big check mark for a great system. Doesn't matter whether they needed it within a week because they couldn't sleep, and they couldn't walk, and they were getting depressed and diabetes. The health system gets a check mark because we got a patient in within less than six months. If the length of stay was less than the prescribed four days, another check mark for efficiency. If the hip stayed in place for the four days they were in hospital, check mark for effective healthcare. If they didn't get a superbug or a surgical site infection, great, check mark for safety. And if they answered good, very good or excellent, to the satisfaction survey, so that's a perfect situation. It doesn't count if the patient, you know, who asks later, a month later, "Were you pain free? Did you get full mobility? Did you get back to whatever your quality of life was?" And so, we're looking more at patient-related outcome measures or PROMs. And can you imagine, you know, a hospital saying, "You'll get in with less than six months, you won't get an infection, etc.?" Or, 95% of hip patients return to a full, active life without pain? It's a different way of looking at it, but it comes back to health as opposed to healthcare.
Oh, I think I got it. Oh, wow, I got it on the first try. My name's Alena, and I'm a part of the Emerging Health Leaders in Ottawa. So, I think there's a couple of us here who are finishing up our masters, and I'm also working for the federal government and really learning a lot of new things. And I'm looking to see what you think about my generation, for an example. I don't consider myself maybe a leader, but definitely an emerging health professional. And I'm kind of wondering, how do I prevent those risk-averse behaviors? How do I encourage higher performance? Not only within the healthcare as a whole, but what about just healthcare teams on their own? What do we do in the healthcare system differently as emerging health leaders going forward? And kind of what kind of a change can we make as a grassroots initiative?
I guess, as the full-time educator, I guess it's my privilege to answer. Though, to clarify, you're asking about what is best for your career or what is best for you to do to make society better? All right, good. Because it's, we're being fairly repetitious here, but I think your question kind of allows us to explore a wider philosophical issue. And that has to do with what was mentioned earlier around transitioning from vertical programs to horizontal programs, which is a difficult thing to do. So, a vertical program is a bunch of money drops down, funds an institution, people get surgery or whatever it is, and out the door, and they're back into the wild. A horizontal program allows integration with the other aspects of society, such that an individual can navigate through his or her community and be incrementally bettered throughout his or her day. And to even more widely answer your question, I want to go back to something that was said in the very first question. There's a phrase that always kind of bothers me a bit, and that phrase is "patient-centered care." And it's something that we always kind of take for granted as being the thing we should focus on when it comes to putting together policies and procedures. And it always bothers me, because I'm a global health researcher. And what I see work better on the global stage is community-based care. So, focusing on the individual sort of says that the individual has the right to whatever extreme access to services technology currently allows. Focusing on the community says that what we're interested in isn't so much the supremacy of the individual experience, but the extent to which an individual can navigate and intersect with other members of his or her community. And that relates to your question, because the challenge before you is to develop policies, procedures, programs, perspectives, to allow that to happen. Instead of focusing on health, well, you know what the best way to make a community healthy is to educate them, right? To give them jobs, and to give them roads and clean water. So, it's a multi-sectoral approach to make a community overall elevated. And it doesn't necessarily make your life expectancy over 90 years, but it does make the quality of that life up to 85 or so far better. Was that a roundabout way of answering your question?
So, maybe a whole different path. When I look for leaders in the Ottawa Hospital, there's three things that, to me, will put you to the front of the line. The first is, leaders have to have a passion. And for me, the passion is for the quality of patient care. And you don't ever have to touch a patient. As a leader, you can influence the quality of patient care from many, many levels. So, I would say I look for a passion for the success of the organization in its quality journey. I look for high energy. It's not inspiring to see someone sort of drag into work and say, "Wow, the system's whacked up. I'll do my best, and can't wait to get out of here." And positivity. So, you know, passion for the quality, high energy and positive. And to me, those people, enough of them in leadership positions around the hospital, inspire others to actually make quality their passion, be positive about the system, and say, "We can do it."
I agree with all of those comments. And I guess the other thing I would add is, for me, it's authenticity, especially for clinical leaders. An authentic clinical leader is somebody who remembers why they went into health professional school, truly has at their core and at their heart, despite all the cynicism that's around us and all the negativity, they still really believe that they're doing something good in the world, that they're serving their patients. You know, these very fundamental core beliefs that, you know, I think a lot of cynical people put down as Pollyanna-ish, I think those are the people that I trust the most, and those are the people I want working beside me in leadership positions.
I'll take my way up here to the top. Some people will be able to look up this TED Talk. It's from Daniel Pink. It's the idea that eventually you'll reach a point where you cannot pay enough people money to do their job even better. You need something called autonomy, the ability to choose the life you want. You want the ability to be master of what your profession is and improve your ability to do it. And finally, you need a purpose, as we've been hearing, a passion, a purpose, a reason to want to do what you do. That's what leaders really need.
I'm not an emerging health professional or leader in any way, but I was a city councillor for many years in the city. And I'll tell you, I wouldn't be here if I hadn't received the specific invitation to come here. I'm not planning on entering the medical profession. But I'm finding the discussion way too refined for someone who spent 13 years in city council. I don't really understand a lot of it. And one of the, and that bothers me, because I think I should. And when I think of the Canadian medical system, there's some of the things that comes to my mind is that if we had to, Tommy Douglas was around today, we had to bring it in, we'd never do it. Because enough values have changed, that equity that you're talking about isn't important enough for a lot of Canadians. It should be, but it's not universally accepted anymore. And in fact, it's played off relentlessly by much of the politics we see, to play one little group off to another, make sure we don't get equity. So, I don't hear discussions about that. I don't hear discussions about how great our system is. Go to the states and try out their system and see how, what. Most of us can tell horror stories from that. And I don't see Canadians saying, "We have a great medical system, and we want to make it better. And we don't want to go back anywhere, anywhere, to a place like where you have commercial-driven Medicare." Then, another thing I don't see is information. You're saying, "Well, there's a lot of information, it's not coming out." Well, it's not, because, why? Hundreds of ingos, little ones like the Council of Health, the Canadian Council of Social Development, have been butchered in the last 10 years. They don't exist anymore. The Statistics Canada does not have the same data that it had 10 years ago. So, there's a reason why Canadians don't have the information. It doesn't exist. And when I hear you guys, your leaders, not me, I'm just an old city councillor from down the road, I don't hear you talking like this. I hear you talking in such a refined way that I'm thinking, "Well, I think he's talking about home care, but I'm not really sure." You know? So, I'd like to see a little more passion, and I'd like to see arguments rooted in how people really feel and really think, and how I really feel and really think, because we've got a great system. I want to see it better, and I want to walk into a hospital like the Children's Hospital with my grandparents, with my grandchildren, I'm the grandparent. I want to see it better. It looks like a tent now. It's so worn down and beaten up. Anyway, those are some of my thoughts. And I think, congratulations to all for working so hard, and something is very important to me. Hope it will remain important in the distance, not in the near future. But anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Well, I think if we get lots more riled up like that, because I do like the passion, the energy. But you said one thing that none of the four of us said. You said, "We have a great healthcare system, we just want it better." We're saying, "We don't have a great healthcare system, and as long as Canadians believe we do, this change isn't going to be evident."
In the United States, they don't measure wait times. Because you want surgery, you'll get surgery. The problem is, you know, 45,000 people die because they don't even get on a waitlist because they don't have access to it. That's what we can't fathom. But we're rationing it by making longer wait times. And we're accepting it as better than the United States. You know, both are broken. Not one is really better than the other. We sleep better at night because everybody gets on a waitlist. But they're very long. They're the longest in the OECD countries.
I have a friend who died in the States.
Right. Because, you know, socioeconomic status. We don't allow that. But because we don't allow that, we accept long wait times, which I'm saying, that's not acceptable.
So, my name's Nina, and I am a master's student at Carleton. And as someone who's familiar with EMR, electronic medical records, I see it as a rich and large source of data to use, right? So, we're talking here about reporting outcomes. So, why are we not implementing EMR, a grander scheme? And what kind of barriers are there to using EMR? Because I use it every day in my workplace, right? So, I think if we could have it, it would provide us that information that we need to report.
Thank you for the questions. Great question. And in fact, a lot of other countries implement far better and more in-depth health information systems. Actually, poorer countries do it better, because they actually can lay it down pristinely, like countries like Brazil, or I work in Guyana, do it fairly well. One of my graduate students is actually trying to answer that very question. Why don't we use EMR and EHR, electronic health records, electronic medical records, for the purposes of answering some of these questions and making our system more refined and efficient? I don't want to give away her results so far, but what she's finding are, the barriers tend to be firstly, a discomfort with technology. Second of all, someone waves their hand, discussing technology. Second of all, pricing, even though the long run, the cost will come down, upfront, the investment costs are quite high. Thirdly, infrastructure doesn't quite exist yet. Fourthly, concerns around security. So, are you comfortable with your personal medical records being shared across the airwaves? I am, because I trust the technology. A lot of people are not. But what we think will happen is, when the current generation of users passes on, and a more open-minded, younger generation enters that field, that this will come a reality. It kind of has to happen, right? And what we think it will be really useful for is doing wide-scale disease surveillance, which will incrementally reduce costs and be a bit more sensitive to outbreaks and things like that.
Yeah, I think it was a broad theme in the Health Accords. You know, every Canadian citizen will have an electronic health record. I think it's strong leadership and policies and legislation. People shouldn't be allowed to opt out. It is a critical success factor for a better health system and quality of care.
It's Michael Rakliss. Can I just chime in on this one?
Please, please do, Michael. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I think that there's a number of other reasons that have been mentioned, but what hasn't been mentioned is that, and maybe Jack was suggesting this, is in other countries there was no choice. And that in Canada, there's lots of choice. And particularly for physicians, the implementation of electronic medical records is being done by negotiations, at the negotiations tables. And that's where our primary healthcare policy is also being developed. Not in open public forums like this, but in stinky, smelly, dark rooms where there's nobody but government and doctors. And I know from being a member of the OMA myself, I think the people on the panel might have already got their notices from their sections. My section within the OMA sent me a note saying, "Rally on behalf of our section of public health doctors." That there's almost no consideration of the public interest when you get to those bargaining tables. And that's where a lot of the policy is supposed to be developed. So, there's lots of other bottlenecks that we have in Canada, but as far as I'm concerned, that's the major one, because that's where we're trying to put our policy through. And it's like trying to put an elephant through a keyhole. It's just not going to fit. Those negotiation meetings are absolutely the wrong place to be deciding our health policy. And I, again, there's lots of blame to spread around, but as far as I'm concerned, that's the number one reason why we don't have more effective clinical governance in this country. And the lack of clinical governance and integration of physicians really into our healthcare system is the number one problem I feel our healthcare system is facing.
Thank you. So, I have two very final questions that are very specifically directed to individuals. So, let's get through them.
I just wanted to make a comment on equity. I'm delighted to hear about a focus on equity and social determinants of health, because I think those are really fundamental, especially when you're talking about health. And I think you really see that in Canada, how much, we still have a long way to go. And when you look at the life expectancies, in my many years of research, they vary by province, because the territories have a large percentage of Aboriginal people, First Nations maintained intimate. They have the lowest life expectancies in Canada. So, I think that's really important to keep in mind. And another comment I wanted to have, too, was, as a non-medical person, all I hear in the media is about the cost of healthcare. We don't hear about things that need to be fixed or policies that need to be put into place. So, that was it for me. Thanks.
Questions? So, I have a final question.
Thank you. So, Jesse Cancer with the Canadian Federation of Medical Students. I'll direct my question. I didn't know it was supposed to be directed, but if I have to choose one person, I'm going to direct it to Dr. Kitz, because I never get a chance to ever talk to you. Our Dr. Deanna Dan, sorry as well, but the others I can hit up later. But my question, so the question was maybe focused on the fact this is a leadership group that's bringing it together. So, I wanted to ask Ashley about leadership in Canadian healthcare. And I have to say, maybe it's the circles that I run around in, but I get the sense that there's a lot of leaders in Canadian healthcare. There's a lot of people who are interested in health. I don't know if that is driven by the fact that we have something like the CBC coming out and saying Tommy Douglas is the greatest Canadian. There's this love affair with healthcare. I get the sense that there's a lot of leaders. But I'm really struck by something else that Leslie Thompson from Kingston General once said, in a meeting this year, she said, "We live in ecosystems in healthcare, not necessarily ecosystems." And I'm wondering, actually, if... And I'm wondering actually if the problem is not necessarily that we have not enough leaders, but we have maybe egocentric leaders. I point that towards our medical association, I point that towards me, first off. But do you think that leadership in that sense is a problem in Canada?
So, Lesley is absolutely right, and you're correct. We have all kinds of leaders. You know, medical students, residents, physicians, nurses. Nurses, I think now are the most highly respected public figures. Physicians are up there, residents. By the very nature of the role of nurses and doctors in the system, each one of them is actually a leader. If they're passionate for the patient experience, if they're high-energy and positive about the health system, it will inspire everyone around them, and they will follow. There's a lot of negativity, a lot of oppression, almost a victim mentality. And it needs to change. And I know that everybody sits back and says, "The system is broken, I'm doing the best I can." The system is all of us, including patients. And increasingly, should be more patients involved in the system. But the front line needs to understand that, yeah, there's formal leadership positions like the CEO and the president of the Canadian Medical Association and the chief of medical staff. But to me, the real leadership is going to come from the front lines up, based on an overarching framework of a common set of goals. Better health, better care, and better value covers it all. So, if we could pick one thing under each of those, better health. Let's reduce the incidence of admissions for diabetes to hospitals in Ottawa. Better care. Let's improve the outcomes for heart attacks. And better value for all, let's look at something we can actually improve the quality and reduce the cost. That would be a start. We don't need to boil the ocean. So, to me, we need to recognize that there are more, there's leaders at every level, and accept that responsibility. The one thing I'm finding that I was naive about five years ago was, you know, encouraging physicians and nurses to fulfill their leadership roles, lead by example. And now I know that if you don't invest in leadership development, building skills and capacity, everybody will mean well, but the effect will be a lot less than it could be. So, I would say, you know, physicians, nurses, frontline, accept the responsibility as a leader. Don't look at yourself as a victim of the system. You are the system, and we can, Canada can return to the podium of a top-performing system. But we need that common goals and measurement reporting.
We will now close the Q and A session, and we will move to the lucky draw. So, thank you so much, everyone, for your questions. And thank you so much to the speakers who were able to give such in-depth responses to your questions. I will now call upon Mr. Jean Guislier, vice president of the National Association of Federal Retirees and former chair of the National Seniors Council to perform the draw. So, for our first prize, we have a gift bag from David's Tea. Oh, and first, I would like to acknowledge the sponsors again. David's Tea, Restaurant 18, Delta Hotels, and the Lord Elgin Hotel for the contributions for tonight's lucky draw. So, our first prize, again, is the gift bag from David's Tea.
I'll read the last three numbers, 998.
So, our second prize is a $100 gift card from Restaurant 18 in the Byron Market.
Again, the last three numbers, 995. I'll check mine, but I won't win.
Our next prize is a one-night stay at the Delta Hotels, Ottawa. And our final prize for the evening, it's a one-night stay at the Lord Elgin Hotel. I would like to thank all the speakers who were able to so graciously give their time tonight. And on behalf of Emerging Health Leaders Ottawa, we would like to present you with a certificate, a certificate of appreciation. So, would you all please stand? We also have, we also have a certificate for our moderator, Dr. Abdallah, as well. And we also have one for Mr. Owen Adams, if he's still here. Oh, and could all the speakers, or whoever I gave the certificates to, please come stand for a photo opportunity, please? Just hold on one second, guys, we just want to do this photo, and then, I just have some concluding statements. Oh, if I could have everyone, if I could get everyone's attention for a second, please. So, I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, for the Pan-Canadian Town Hall Meeting on the Canada Health Accord. I would like to thank my dynamic team of Emerging Health Leaders Ottawa. Please give them a round of applause once again. It was a collaborative effort. I would like to thank our speakers once again for challenging us to greater opportunities of leadership in healthcare. And I would like to thank all of you participants for coming out tonight. So, thank you again, and have a great night.